This is the City of Wapaka, first Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
To tonight's regular scheduled city council meeting, tonight is October 4th, 2022, at 6:00 PM, and we'll begin this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read Clark's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take a roll for us?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Henry Velicker.
Here.
Scott Pritchardsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Demetri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
You want to start the staff introduction too?
I will. I'm Sandy Stibbs, the city clerk.
Karen Jensen, city administrator.
Kathy Kev, finance director.
Stephanie Reif, assistant finance director.
Jared Rayquell, community and economic development.
Eric Bailey, library director.
Justin Behrens, director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec director.
Brian Hosele, chief of police.
Thank you. Also want to remind you that if you have a cell phone on you, to either turn it off or put it on mute for tonight, so there's no interruptions. We have a consent agenda that's in your packet, and these are items that we will take with one motion unless we, a council member would like to see any of these items moved to the regular agenda. If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Fair, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say no. Motion carried. Regular agenda, Sandy, it looks like you have one item on there.
I do. Under number nine, new business, letter A, additional information was uploaded to the city website.
All right, so with that then, with that one addition, we're looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So move.
Motion by Chestnut.
Second.
Second by Martin, that we approve the regular agenda with that one addition. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, say no. Motion carried. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have presentation by Jeff McCorsky. He's the executive director for the Wapaka County Economic Development Corporation, and this has to do with the Wapaka County Transportation Grant. Jeff, all yours.
Good evening. Thank you for the invitation to speak to you tonight. I was invited to talk about the transportation project that we started. We were able to receive a $3.2 million workforce innovation grant to establish a rural transportation system. Some of the reasons why we went for that, we were looking for ways to reduce the barriers for employees going, getting back to work. And we have a number of businesses that are just dying to get people into, apply for their jobs and get, retain their jobs. We started looking at the data, and we found out there were a couple, a couple issues that we really centered on. One was that we noticed that, looking at transportation planning data, the, the number of, the percentage of households with fewer vehicles than workers in the New London and the rural area around New London was between 8 and 13%. So that's 13% of the households had, let's say, one vehicle when there's two workers, creating problems with multiple people getting to work. In the Wapaka and the Clintonville area, it was just over 11%. When we compared that to Otagamee and Winnebago Counties, their percentages were closer to 1.3%. So we really saw a big change or big difference in our rural area with the, the lack of transportation. We also started talking with businesses and chambers and, and other organizations that were dealing with this, and they were telling us about the number of employees that, if they got to work, if they applied and they got a job, their transportation was unreliable or too affordable for them to, to get to work. Especially with, right after COVID, and now with inflation and higher gas prices, it's continuing to be that problem. But one business shared some data, not many businesses kind of track this information, but one, one company shared their data that 19% of their turnover overall, to overall staff was due to transportation issues. And that rate increased to 39% of turnover for just the probationary period. So people would get the, get their job, realize that if they're going on to a second or third shift, it created transportation issues, they, they could show up when they could, but finally, they either got terminated, or they just stopped showing up to work. We also noticed that 25% of adults in Wapaka County are below the 185% of federal poverty level. Another statistic that we, we showed the state that we really needed to, to look at the situation. There are pockets of, of public transportation in the county. Of course, Wapaka's got the taxi service. Clintonville's got a taxi service. And there's also transportation for elderly and disabled, but really, nothing is, there's no alternative for, for workers or for other people to, to get to, to work. So we put this all together, and there's been organizations looking at this for over five years in the New London area, because that's kind of where a lot of the data started from. So even though we received the grant, we were supported by a lot of data over the last five years, a lot of organizations looking at this. We're the figurehead or the target, but a lot of people have been looking at this. So one of the solutions that we came up with was an innovative yet proven approach to rural transportation called a mobility of service model, which basically you set up a technology platform that allows the existing transportation providers, the cab companies, the volunteers, other organizations that have a mission to, to do transportation. You set that up so that they're a part of the, the solution. And where there are no providers, or there's times where the providers can't, can't meet the needs, you put in a microtransit system. Phoenix Mobility Rising is the organization we, we partnered with, and also Make the Ride Happen, which is coming into the Wapaka area recently. Those two organizations are creating it to coordinate this mobility of service project. So where there are no providers, we're going to set up a microtransit system of five, five drivers, I mean, five vehicles and one handicap accessible van. They're going to be taking the place where there are no providers, or the times where the providers, where there are providers and they can't provide the service. What we're expecting is the, the whole network of taxis, providers, and volunteers can create a capacity of about 26,500 rides for people getting to work. And if there's additional capacity available, we'll be looking at, one of the other reasons why people can't get to work, if, if you need to drive a spouse or a child to a doctor visit or, or for an emergency, a lot of times people take off of work to do that, well, this might be an alternative to keep people at work while the transportation is available for, for that need. It's basically going to be a 24/7 call center, or mobile app, or webpage. You can, either the employer or the employee can sign, set up for, request for service, request for a ride. They, it'll then identify the provider that can, can get the service, or if there's no provider, the, the microtransit system. And then if the person needs to drop a child, a child off to daycare, that's a part of the ride, or coming back from work, picking up the child from daycare. It's kind of taking that, that other issue that is a big barrier for employment as well out of their hands. So so we, we hope to, well, right now, we're establishing the, the technology. We're setting up the, basically the rider's guide, some of the policies and procedures, and also the, the rates in which we're going to work with, and how to establish a, an equitable opportunity for, for rides. There will be some people that will receive free rides, some people that will have to pay. We're trying to incorporate some approach for payment, because once you do, it kind of puts the clients, client in, skins in the, skin in the game. And they found that, once there's, there's a payment, there's a lack of canceling the ride, or, or basically no-shows. So we're going to try to work out the best rates possible for, for people getting to work and of, back home from work. We were expecting this to be established, and hopefully, we'll be able to start some rides around the mid-December. So we'll probably be starting gradually, working with some major industry in the New London area, then gradually moving over. Probably six months, we'll be into the Wapaka area, and then we'll start moving north. So I'm hoping that by the end of the first year, we'll have the, the county covered, and start seeing some results, and start providing some data to show that it's, it's having an impact on the workers and the, the employers in the, in the county. With that, if you have any questions, I'll.
Anybody have any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Colin.
Is the grant meant to start this off the ground, or is it meant to keep it going? Is this supposed to be self-sufficient within a certain period of time? Is that your goal?
Yeah, the grant is a three-year, so it's a three-year pilot project. And right from the beginning, we're going to be working on how to sustain, sustain it at year four. A lot of the ability is for us to show some success and go to the State Department of Transportation and, and look for some public funds to, to take a, quite a burden of the money off, off our hands. The other parts will be trying to work with employers and the, and the riders themselves. So all told, I think it's about $900,000 a year to maintain it. With Department of Transportation funds, it gets, goes down to about $300,000. So for $300,000 countywide, we should be able to find a way to pull together resources to maintain it. And we'll find that there's, there's areas that are of higher need, some of lower need, and a lot of it's going to be working with the, the major manufacturers, major businesses. Because when, when we see success, they're going to have more success. They're going to hopefully have more retention, they're not going to have so much turnover. And by doing so, they'll, they'll want to make sure the, the system is maintained.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Sorry, go ahead, Kathy.
I have a couple of questions. What impact does this seem, will this have on the city of Wapaka's taxi service? And if you're going to be looking at the DOT to give you some of the 531 money or the 8236 money that we get, does that mean you're going to be taking money out of that pot? So there isn't enough for us to get to continue to operate? Because our taxi service right now is just barely breaking even with what we have. And we're going to have a couple items here on the agenda tonight that's going to impact our ridership. So you creating another taxi service in the area gives us question as to whether or not we can continue on.
No, I, I looked at the, what was in your packet, and what, what we're putting together should actually help the taxi service, because we're, it's going to be incorporated into the network of riders, and we're going to be broadcasting and publish, publicizing this network quite a bit to, to target workers, especially on second and third shifts, but of workers. So there may be an opportunity for the taxi service to increase their hours, to catch a lot more of those workers as they, as it becomes apparent that where the needs are. So I would, I would see that with the taxi services being a part of the network, it should help to increase the number of rides for your taxi service. The, the other taxi service that we're creating is going to be primarily in the more rural areas. So we want your organizations to, to succeed as well. Because if yours doesn't succeed, then we have to, we would have to cover that as, as well. So I do think it'll improve the ridership of the taxi service, and of the taxi service of Clintonville as well.
So you've talked to Running and Brown Cab, who's our provider of services?
No, we have not. And in fact, until we, until I saw the packet, I was not aware that it was Brown Cab. But we will be working with them, and we're working with Fox Valley Cab that's in and around London, and the, the Clintonville Taxi Service as well. But we hope to begin having those discussions as we identify the, our policies and our procedures. And, and when the technology is available, we can, we can approach the, the taxi services to, to show them how they're going to be positively impacted.
Because we do have limited hours for our services. So we aren't 24/7 as far as operations-wise. If the possibility of getting into a, a more of a joint agreement with you, with your group, to be able to provide that service within our area, would you provide additional drivers or equip vans or something like that?
I think that would be, we'd have to work out those details, yeah. We'd be contracting with the, the taxi services and making sure that they're not losing anything on, you know, with, as being a part of the network. They're not required to be at a lower rate or anything like that. We, we take your rates into consideration and work with those rates, and hopefully provide additional ridership. And if, if necessary, if they need to, to cover additional hours, or if we need to come in at those, for those additional hours, we'll, we'll have to work that out.
Okay.
And as far as the, the state monies, we met with the Secretaries of Economic Development, Department of Workforce Development, and the Department of Transportation yesterday, kind of a roundtable discussion, and they were all in favor of us moving forward, and they did not feel as if that would eliminate your monies. We would be looking at additional monies being brought into the county for trans, public transportation.
Because the DOT has told us that we weren't going to have the amount of funding that we've had in the past, that we should be looking at in, after 2023, in 2024 and 25, to getting less of what, because of the COVID money being used up, so.
But they've assured us that, that well, they're, they're very interested in our project. And what, one thing they want to do is identify a solution that is, will help a rural community so that they can replicate it in other rural communities. So they're not, they're, they're on our side, hoping for this to be a success.
Okay.
Anybody else? Well, thanks, Jeff, for coming in and telling us what's going on.
And if there's any further questions for, through, through Aaron, or please give me a call or send me an email. We might have to answer anything that anybody asks. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, next up, public input. This is for non-agenda items. Is there anybody that would like to speak to the council or staff on a non-agenda item? If so, step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Let me, your time to three minutes or less. Any public input? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Under new business, we have project funding, budget, and bid review of future public works facilities. Justin, I think it's going to you here.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. And I have Lydia Freyas from Myron here with me again tonight to assist if needed. And do we have anyone on teams? I did send the link up.
I do not see anyone. Let me double-check. No, it doesn't look like it. No, nobody.
Get rid of that.
Whatever that is.
Well, thank you, Mayor. The memo for, of course, this project starts on page 36 of your packet. The first page and a half of the memo is information that's been included in the past. We've talked about this project for a very long time, so that is all just review to get you brushed up. So we can skip ahead to 37. This is moving forward part. So the last time Lydia Myron and Barry Entos was here, we gave a presentation to you guys about our facility, where it was tracking. At that time, we had mentioned that the budget of such was, was tracking upwards of $10 million plus. And we felt like we had some nods, you know, and we had some support to continue moving forward, which we did. So what we did, like the next steps, was of course to look at every single inch of the building and make sure that we did not exceed that number. Obviously, with the way things have been in the markets with material and labors, you know, those numbers have climbed dramatically in the last couple of years, and have thrown our previous budget kind of out the window. But what we did was, we also looked to our designers, to our partners, and looked at, you know, is there a different way we could do that? And we tasked Barry Entos and challenged them to come up with several options for us. Now, one was to keep going with billing it all at one time. Another one was to build it in two, two phases, basically kind of spread out over maybe like a year or two. And then another one was to have two phases where we put up a main building, and then we'd wait like on another chunk, like the repair garage, say, future, five-plus years. What we found out with all those, though, is the most efficient way to do things, and with the uncertainty in the markets that we've been seeing, is we should just continue with the one holistic build, what we presented on. However, when we, you know, tasked Barry Entos and Myron to look at these things, we were asking to provide services above their original scope. So within this ask is design fee increase. So for Barry Entos, that is an amount of just over $24,000. That request is included in the following pages in a letter. Myron's fees, that original agreement wasn't not to exceed, but also had a, a fee based on the entire construction cost. But both of those fees were anticipated when we reported on that 10-plus million. Not precisely, but we had contingencies built in. And then also, within that $10 million summary, we had contingencies, and then additional items that the city is going to take on. We need to provide additional shelving for ourselves, we're doing our own IT and security, and we're doing all of our own landscaping. So as we move forward, our request for bids went out. We received all the bids on the 21st of September at 2:00 PM. We received over 70 bids, and there was an amended sheet that was submitted later on, which is what Aaron has up on the sheet, on the screen now. And then the next handout, this large table is the one we'll, we'll focus on for this discussion. The reason why it was amended, we tried to time up the bids with this approval for several reasons, with the materials. A lot of times, the metal steel is only good for like 15 days. Roofing is sometimes even less than that, and we wanted to turn around and get these things approved so we could get them locked in immediately. What we found out, though, was a few days after getting the packet together, the windows and glazing was an incomplete bid, or the low was an incomplete bid. So that one had to get thrown out, and the numbers were adjusted, and which is reflected on this updated sheet, updated on 10/4. So so as we're looking at this sheet, the bids are all up on top in different categories, and they're listed there. A baseline of just over $7 million. We add on all the soft costs. The contingency, which we feel is, is really conservative, of $470,000. Like in past projects with that contingency, that's there for the unexpected. So if we don't need it, we're not going to use it. It would be for a change order in the middle of the project to just keep moving on with the project. But obviously, if we don't need it, we're not going to use it.
Justin, can I just point out that, so that council understands that too? With that contingency fund, if it needs to be used, council has the ultimate decision on using that contingency. You're not approving that necessarily tonight. So if there's a change order, it would have to come back to council.
Well, in the past, we've handled change orders just on the staff level for like road projects, Main Street, Granite Street. This, I'd assume to be the same way.
I thought you and I are on the same page, so we'll have that discussion. Sorry about that. Yeah, go ahead.
Is that, in the past, isn't 10% a normal contingency?
Uh, that was in the past estimates. Myron's, I guess, expertise or suggestion was to go in with just 5% based on their experiences. So we wanted to go in a little more conservative, so we settled on 6.
Sorry, keep going.
Oh, I think I can answer kind of where you're going in, in just a minute here. So the bottom line, what we're looking at is in the yellow there, so just over $9.3 million. The very bottom was added on to show basically where we started and where we're going. So the initial cost of, well, we're just about at $7 million. When we're talking about additional costs, we were talking 10. With the bids coming in at $9.3, we're looking at an additional borrow request of $2.4 million. If I can get you. If I can get you back up to the memo. So wrapping this all up, this last January, in a resolution, the city approved a general obligation bond funds of 8.45 million. Up a little bit more, please, Aaron. Which provided that initial 7 million, right there, 7 million for this facility and then roughly 1.5 for other projects in the city's capital plan. So what we plan on doing is get started on this project now, utilizing that first 7 million upfront, and then coming back to you in the future for that additional roughly 2.4 million. I would expect that at that time, we'd have this number honed in as to what we really need. So the contingency could change at that point, to go back to Paul's comment. But at this point, there is two requested actions. So the first one is for council to approve the budget, and it would be a different number that was showing on there. It would reflect the updated sheets, which would be 9,318,180, which includes the amended fees for Barry Entos and Myron. It would give us the ability to start working on this project with the 2022 bond issue, and then also knowing that a future note of anticipation is going to transfer future debt over to pay for the remaining roughly 2.4. And then the second action is for council to accept these bids, as summarized in the updated table, and then authorize Myron to start securing these contracts per these bid results. And again, as I've noted before, material prices are ever changing and usually into the wrong direction, so we want to get these things secured and start moving. And a final note is initially, we had provided a schedule with these material challenges of breaking ground in the fall of '23. We're looking now at possibly starting in the summer of '23. So our pre-engineered metal building and our concrete panels for our repair garage, those lead times have gotten better. So we're looking at hopefully breaking ground, you know, possibly June or July of '23, which is fantastic, because then we would be in the building and ready to fight our first snow events in '24 out of our new facility. Pending support from the council tonight.
Okay. So you know what the request is? There are two motions that, that's being requested tonight. Do we have any questions? Eric, go ahead.
I noticed like on one of the big ticket items, the metal building systems, that for almost a million dollars, that there is only one bid on that. Is that, was that expected?
Yeah, so up until the week of the bid, we had, I believe, three to four other bidders who we were expecting to bid. They did not come through. We did call back, try and confirm why. Didn't get any, I would say, solid responses. That being said, I will say that the low bid you have was significantly, or they were significantly under the budget that we had, but they are a contractor that we have worked with in the past and are familiar with.
Okay, and then my second question is, are all of the low bids that were chosen, are you familiar with them, and are they reputable?
Yeah, yeah. So I was personally really happy to see the amount of bids we got and recognized almost every name on the sheet. And then any name I didn't recognize, I know with your team there, there were contractors that the city was familiar with. So I would say between the two, we're in, we're in a good spot. And then any bid that was deemed as incomplete, we did not include that low number. So kind of like Justin said, you know, as part of the post-bid investigation, we do our due diligence, even if it is a trusted sub, to try and vet out anything that we see as incomplete. So if there is an incomplete bid, then as approved by Justin, we then go to the next little bid. So, yeah, everything we've seen so far, we're, we're very happy with, just from a familiarity standpoint.
All right, that's all I needed. Thanks.
Henry, go ahead.
When we get ready to make a, when do you think the decision gets made on the extra, was it 2.4 million that needs to be borrowed to complete this project? When would that, at 60% completion of the project, or?
Well, can I lean on you guys to help me with that one?
Nope.
Well, I guess where I'm going, maybe I'll salvage Justin, save him a little bit, is I, I guess you guys have had that internal discussion, because we have capital, and this obviously is number one priority if we pull the trigger. So there's things that are in every part of our city that might be put on hold and just that we understand that, to, to fund that.
Right. Like, as far as construction or construct, constructability and then schedule-wise, if we, if we can start in the summer of '23, we'll be halfway done by January of '24. So yes, saying 50, 60% is a pretty close milestone there.
So council will be able to see in entirety kind of the capital needs in '24 and beyond, and weigh the building in and all that.
Right, and that's been in.
Keep talking if you want to.
That's been discussed in previous committee of the whole meetings about our financial models and how our projections look with our borrow, our borrow capacity, and then future borrowing for other projects.
Go ahead, guy.
As long as council, when they make the motion, put in that this is going to be reimbursed with a future bond, we do have the ability to reimburse ourselves with bond proceeds going forward. We have that resolution out there for bonds. So at this point, we would be part of the 2023 borrow, that, that we would do the note anticipation note and then turn that into a bond at a different time. But that was presented before, when we were doing the committee of the whole.
I, you obviously know that if you agree to this today, that we are going to have to borrow another 2.4 million to complete this project. And the longer we can wait, the less interest we're going to owe on that at the time. But we also have to look at the best time to borrow the money. As Kathy said, we do have some funds available that if we don't get the money borrowed quick enough, we can always get that, we can use cash on hand, basically, and then once we have the money borrowed, we can reimburse ourselves for it. So there's a plan there. If we find that it's, it's better to borrow the money sooner than later, that's what we'll do. Again, you're, you're going to have to approve, even though you're approving the total package, we're still coming back and, and saying that we're going to borrow that 2.4 in the future. And, but honestly, let's hope that it's less than the 2.4. Another reason why you want to wait to see what that number actually is. Does that answer your question, Henry? I hope.
Yeah.
All the way. Anybody else have any questions? Anything else? Justin, you want to add? Lydia?
That's it.
Anything? Okay, so I'm just going to repeat what Justin has, has said to you so that you understand what he's requested, or what, what's being requested tonight. The dollar amount, which is on the bottom of page one, I think Aaron has it up on the screen, too. The amount that's requested to budget for the future public works facility is 9,318,180. That also includes the change from Barry Entos and the Myron's amended fees, as summarized, also in this packet that you're seeing here, and that we use the $7 million from the 2022 bond issue, and then we use a note anticipation note for the remaining amount of money when needed. I know it's a long, but that's, that's what we're looking for here. I think the motion can basically state that we agree, we agree to the amount of 9,318,180 for the future public works facility using borrowed money to do that.
I would make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Hagan, second by Velicker, that we move forward with this project at an amount not to exceed 9,318,180. Any discussion? Sandy, you'll call or roll?
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
An enthusiastic aye.
Scott Puchatsky?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Anna Mary Fair?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right, one other motion here. This is to accept those bids that, that Aaron had up on the screen. So it's, you'll see at the top, it was dated 9/21/2022. So we would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve the bids as.
Summarized.
As summarized. Second.
Motion by Fair, second by Peterson, that we accept the bids as summarized down the table that you see up on the screen. Any further discussion? Go ahead, Colin.
Do we have to include the authorization from Myron to secure the contracts in this motion?
So part of this, you'll see there's that GMP column, so that's the guaranteed max price. That would be the revised GMP that we would then revise our contract for, and we'd follow up after this approval with that legal exhibit. So the verbal approval today would allow us to get our contracts underway, but then we would follow up to amend everything based on the new value. Does that answer your question?
Well, the, what, what Justin was asking had two parts. There was an and. We, we did the first part in this motion. The second part says, and authorize Myron to complete the contracts. I'm asking everybody on the group if we have to include that in our motion or not.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I should have said that, too. Mary, are you okay with amending that to authorize Myron Construction to secure the contracts?
Yes.
And Dave, you're okay with that?
Good catch.
Thank you, Colin.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any other discussion? Sandy, you'll call or roll?
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much for all your support.
Thank you.
I think that's really great.
Big milestone today. 20 years.
Okay, next up. Next up, we have land purchase inquiry from A&amp;N Wapaka LLC at 701 South Industrial Drive. Jared, that looks like your, your line.
Yes, sir. This one starts on page 52 of your packet. So staff is approached by A&amp;N Wapaka, which is actually subsequently Wapaka Rental Center, same owners. They have recently purchased a lot at 701 South Industrial Ave. Map can be found on page 54 of your packet, just a general overview of the area. They'd approached the city asking to the possibility in expanding their parcel by purchasing some of the vacant land that is next to the parcel. That land is owned by the city. They drew up a map on page 53 of approximately what they'd be looking for. You know, some of this plan entails a little bit of an expansion of some outdoor storage for their equipment. They want to expand some parking for their employees, not only at their Wapaka rental facility, but also just all of the tenants in this structure to begin with. So they would be looking to purchase an approximately 200-foot extension to the east and then a 50-foot extension to the south. Again, all this land is currently vacant. Based on how we handled the last land purchase inquiry, the city would opt for the 30,000 an acre and then prorating it based on the exact size parcel that they are looking to gain. What we're looking here for here today is a preliminary sort of head nod approval for this to move forward. If that is gained here today, I will reach back out to the property owners, let them know that their next step is to hire a surveyor, spend that money for a certified survey map, and then bring that forward along with an offer to purchase. So again, really just looking here for that approval for the owner to move forward in this process. You know, I just hate for the property owner to move forward, spend money, and then have denial from the, the council in the end. So more of just a preliminary check to make sure that this is approved by, or this is favorable by council before they move forward. I will say I have reached out, as this land being purchased is part of the River North development area. I have reached out to our master developers who are assisting us in developing this area, Hoffman Development Group. I've also kind of ran this past our development review team that occurs every Thursday, just to check their thoughts, and each one replied with a favorable vote, or there was silence as I took that also as acceptance. But, yeah, so the master developer did confirm that that would be okay, and it wouldn't negatively affect the overall development, as nothing has really been finalized in that area.
So the request tonight is to, to allow Jared to tell the, the owner that we are willing to move forward with the sale of this property.
And I'm happy to take any questions, if you have any.
Okay, any questions? It actually cleans up that area. I mean, there's maybe a little bit of dispute where the lot line was anyway, so this, this will really clean it all up.
Yeah, I understand that the developers from the River North can work their development plans around it. I'm just wondering, based on some of the plans I've already seen, does that mean that there's going to be additional design costs to now factor this land in, where there may have been other plans in place?
Shouldn't be. Nothing was finalized to that point that anything would really have to be significantly modified. You know, they're still in that stage, if I'm correct, of really putting that together.
Yeah, right now, Dimitri, we're working off a conceptual plan. Every time we move into another area and develop another area, there will have to be detailed design work done. So nothing has been done detailed in this area that we would have to redo.
Go ahead, Henry.
Make a motion to authorize staff to proceed with the steps necessary to make the sale of that approximately 10,000 square feet?
74,000 square.
74,000.
Approximately.
Yeah, okay. Square feet, as discussed.
So, second.
Motion by Velicker, second by Chestnut, that we approve of this. Any discussion? Sandy, you'll call or roll?
Barrett Olson?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Puchatsky?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
And Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right, you're still up?
Yes, so the next item in your packet can be found on page 55. This is a resolution pertaining to the elimination of the Wapaka Industrial/Business Park Protective Covenants. On page. On page, uh, sixty of your packets, you can see a map of all the parcels that have, uh, protective covenants placed on them. Um, so these protective, protective covenants were placed on these properties or obviously areas. Um, I believe one was in nineteen seventy-eight, uh, the next one was in nineteen ninety-eight, and then the next one is in two thousand. Uh, they've had a couple amendments, uh, since then, uh, but again, still in the two thousands that those amendments were made, I believe. So fairly old protective covenants, uh, these protective covenants were put into place. Um, you can kind of see on this map, uh, that, you know, some of the protective covenants don't even cover the whole, what is now a whole parcel. Um, some of them overlap, um, you know, property lines that used to be there. Uh, so a lot has changed in this area over time. Um, looking at these protective covenants, uh, staff, uh, felt that a lot of the, uh, requirements in them were either duplicated or just unnecessary based on what we've done with our zoning code and, um, you know, revised our zoning code, uh, to today's standards. So with that in mind, and also, uh, the fact that some of these protective covenants do overlap an area that we are looking to make residential, uh, no longer is industrial. Um, you know, just didn't really work with the overall plan for this area. So upon knowing those items, staff reached out to all of the property owners, invited them in for meetings, uh, to explain the exact situation, uh, that we'd be looking at to eliminate these, uh, I guess, for simpler terms, just extra requirements on the properties, uh, in addition to our zoning code. Talked through any questions they may have, or they may have had, um, and then we requested that they submit some form of, um, acceptance or denial, uh, letter to us, uh, as their vote, uh, neither to eliminate these protective covenants, extra requirements, uh, or keep them if they so please. Based on the number of votes we received back, uh, we did have ample votes. And I do not, I did not include all of them, uh, as they were separate documents, uh, in the packet. Um, but based on, um, the amount of votes we received, they were all favorable. Uh, those that we did not respond or did not hear from, um, you know, that we did not receive a denial or an approval from, was in the minority, uh, anyways. Uh, so the votes that were favorable, uh, we tallied up, uh, based on the requirements in the covenant, uh, document. And there were sufficient votes for all of the, uh, protective covenants to be eliminated. So the final step in this process would be to bring something forward to council, uh, which we are here tonight with. Something that could be recorded, so in the form of a resolution. It was stated that these protective covenants would be, uh, eliminated, um, and then all of the legal descriptions, parcel numbers that are associated with it. And I believe this would need to pass with a majority vote, uh, to be eliminated. And if not, uh, they would remain on the property. So, uh, again, to just briefly recap, uh, we did talk to the property owners, as many as we could, uh, get in here to talk to. Many of them did reply with favorable votes. There are sufficient quantity of votes on each of the protective covenants to be eliminated, um, via the property owners. Uh, the final step would be approval from the council to eliminate these protective covenants.
Move to approve elimination of the protective covenants.
Motion by Martin.
Second.
Second by Chestnut, that we approve resolution number fifteen twenty-six. It's a resolution that to eliminate Wapaka Industrial Business Park, uh, protective covenants. Any discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Henry.
I know this took a lot of effort, so hats off to everybody that touched this. No protective covenants, then we feel like our, our planning or our, uh, zoning code's gonna give us what we need out there.
Yeah, and actually, uh, we went through and created, um, kind of a side-by-side comparison. Um, many of them were redundant, uh, a few of them in the covenants were more restrictive. And then in some cases, the, uh, zoning code was a little bit more restrictive. So I feel it's enough of an even lineup to just bring it into, you know, conformity with the rest of the city and, and only follow the city zoning.
Eliminate a lot of confusion.
Yeah, I think that's the key right here. It's not, it's not as confusing anymore. All right, anybody else? Sandy, go ahead.
What, uh, I guess everybody is quite familiar with these, but, but I'm, I'm really not. I didn't, didn't really, I don't understand what the protective covenant does for this area. And I was wondering why you included the areas outside of River North as to remove protective covenants from those areas. And, uh, then my second question was, do you have to have everyone's responses? Is somebody who owns property out there gonna come back in a month and say, geez, I didn't even know this was going on? Those are two questions.
Yeah, so, uh, first question, so why do we take a look at doing all of the properties when really we would only need to focus on the River North? So I guess a couple answers to that question. One, we felt that, again, their zoning code covered most of it. Um, so just by having these documents, it was really just extra confusion, not only on staff's end to, uh, to remember that any development going in here, uh, would have to be reviewed next to the zoning code as well as these protective covenants. So eliminating confusion there, eliminating confusion on the property owner's side. Uh, many of them, I guess, weren't even aware they have protective covenants overlapping their property, extra requirements they'd have to follow. I know one business actually came forward wanting to do an expansion, and we had to tell them no, per the protective covenants, that is not allowed. And they were basing their kind of whole plan off of our zoning code. So it just, it added extra confusion in their plans. Uh, many of the others we talked to didn't even realize they had extra restrictions on their property. And really, the next one, uh, next answer to that question was, upon going through, I'll say there's a selfish reason as well as a, a feel-good reason. So, and it partly answers your second question. Uh, so for a protective covenant to be amended, which could involve changing the setbacks, could involve, um, adding extra, you know, more requirements, could involve eliminating the whole document altogether, which is what we're looking to do here today. You need a majority vote. And it's a bit convoluted on how it's calculated, uh, but essentially, you know, to, to pare it down, every property gets a vote. So as long as, if there's, you know, fourteen properties, as long as eight of them have voted, um, on this amendment, elimination, addition to, uh, the document will be changed. So that's all that's required. So to get back to, again, why we're doing all of them, um, we need a cooperation with multiple property owners in order to eliminate the protective covenants on the River North parcel specifically. We couldn't just go in and say, these are ours, we don't really want to follow that anymore. We're changing the document. Uh, so we really couldn't do that. So we needed assistance from the other property owners. You know, and also just working with a lot of the property owners out here, to be honest, they don't like restrictions at all.
No one does.
They, they'd rather us eliminate the entire zoning code altogether, I'm sure. So any step in this, you know, direction, you know, trying to create that favorable relationship with the property owners and the city is on our benefit. So, you know, we wanted to try to better that relationship with all of the property owners out there, as well as we also needed them to eliminate it off of our property.
Thank you.
You, when you asked that question too about the property owners out there, you attempted to try and talk to every one of the property owners that were out there. It's not like you just looked for the majority and you stopped.
Correct, so we, we sent out two sets of letters. So one was an initial, um, meeting invite, um, for, we had two meetings, two meeting options. Um, and then after that meeting was held, we waited for questions, uh, we waited for responses. The second letter was to all of the involved property owners, um, asking again for their, you know, their vote, approval or denial, as well as if they had any questions to reach back out. So those two opportunities, we also talked with a couple, um, property owners directly. For example, like the gymnastics studio, we talked to them directly, uh, Sunny Day Childcare, which is, um, on Godfrey Drive, we talked to them directly. The owners of, uh, seven oh one South Industrial, we talked to directly. So quite a few of the properties we did talk to directly, um, and some of them got back to us, some of them didn't. So we tried to contact them, um, in multiple ways, the best we could.
Thanks.
Thanks. Anybody else have any questions? All right, Sandy will call a roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Epstein.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Mary Fair.
Aye.
Nine ayes and one abstain, motion carried.
All right. Jared, thank you. Uh, next up, we have the Brown Cab contract extension for twenty twenty-three. Kathy, your name is on this one.
Um, again, this year, we're extending, um, the Brown Cab running contract, um, with the federal rate that we have to increase, um, our, the amount of per hour that we pay, um, Brown Cab for operating is going to be thirty-six, thirty-six an hour, which is an eight point three percent increase based on the CPI that the August, one that the federal government, um, used. So, uh, again, this will be the last, uh, extension to this contract. We will have to go out for proposals and bids for another two-year contract with three one-year extensions again next year. But, um, this is what the cost of doing business with, um, the taxi services.
Okay, uh, so the, you could see on the bottom of page sixty-one there, then the request is to recommend to a council to approve a one-year extension to Brown Cab, uh, running and incorporated contract for the operation of Wapaka Taxi Service until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, as Kathy has presented that. I'll make that motion, Mayor. A motion by Henry.
Second.
Second by, uh, Martin, that, uh, we approve this, uh, contract extension. Any discussion?
I had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I noticed our rate, you said it's thirty-six, thirty-six, but why is it greater than the majority of the folks? Well, that's the highest in our group and even higher in, than some in group six.
It depends on the additional, the original contract. And then we're bound by the federal guidelines, the percentage increase each year. So whatever we had, uh, negotiated at that time for the original contract, then we're subject to the, uh, increases per the federal funding that we get on this.
So it all goes back to, what, four years ago?
Uh, yep.
I, Kathy, if I can add to that a little bit.
Sure.
So Kathy is spot on, and then the only thing I would add to that is, if you are, some of these smaller towns you'll see are in like closer to Madison, Milwaukee area, and they just have more providers, which would serve as more favorable bidding potentially back four or five years ago. So some of it's location, I believe.
They may also be able to have Uber. We have no Uber.
We got one Uber.
But, you know, there is, you know, having a rural system is really, um, depending on the ridership that you have. I think the other thing that's got going for us is that we do have, um, relatively new equipment.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Well, I, I gotta say this because I, if you, I hope some of you have ridden the cab, but it came to my, uh, it saved me on Friday night because I had to get somewhere, my wife was gone, and a couple people I called, I could not do it. So I called the cab and it was worth the five dollars and thirty cents I paid or something to get me across town, the four or five miles, and I just think it's awesome for a town our size to have this for our people. And Kathy didn't mention the tourism piece of this too, uh, helps, uh, move people around in our summertime. So, I don't know, I, I, and it was a brand-new van, by the way, and a very nice driver. So, um, so I'm a fan for sure. Anyway.
Thanks, Henry. Go ahead, Scott.
It says in your memo here, Kathy, we're gonna have to increase the fares. Is that gonna be a separate motion or brought later on?
That's the next item under Aaron.
Oh, okay.
I only did the contract.
Okay.
Yeah, so right now, the motion is just to approve the contract with Brown Cab, the extension. And that's the motion on the floor right now. Anybody else? Sandy will call a roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Right, Kathy, thank you. Then next up is what Scott was talking about, uh, there is a request that, uh, that the fare price does get increased. And I think, Aaron, you're grabbing that one.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. On page sixty-four of your packet, you'll see a memo, short memo, that explains the fare increases. We actually probably could have done this, I was actually working on, uh, Kathy's, and then Kathy beat me to the punch and a memo came across, and I said, perfect. So I took this one, she took that one. Um, but you can see basically what it is doing is it's going up a quarter, uh, in each of the categories in that table. And that amounts to basically very, very close to the same as the CPI that we just talked about in the expenses and how much that increased. So it's basically an approximate eight point six percent increase, which helps offset that CPI increase. We've talked a couple, when we went through the transit fund, we talked about some of the, we've had some favorable revenues, uh, but some of those things are hard to project on if they'll hold on for a long time or not, the, the increased agency fares, things like that. Um, so we feel like this is needed to ensure that our general fund is not offsetting the cost of, uh, the transit fund. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, anybody wanna make a motion to approve the, approve the, uh, increase in fares?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Porczatsky, that we, uh, increase the fares across the board by twenty-five cents. Any discussion? Sandy will call a roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
And Mary Fair.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, uh, next up, this has to do with, uh, uh, the water utility and, uh, simplified rate case. And again, Aaron, that's yours.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. This memo, council members, is shown on page sixty-five of your packet. Uh, this is kind of along the same veins as the taxi fare. Uh, we're trying to keep up with inflationary pressures, uh, rising costs in the water utility. Uh, you can see in my memo, it just shows that our auditors do recommend that our water utility do apply for a simple rate case, or simplified rate case every other year or whenever it's eligible to do so. Our last simplified rate case was in two thousand and nineteen, and we have been, it has been determined we're eligible for that again. The difference in this year is, is typically a simplified rate case amounts to a three percent increase in water rates. Uh, the PSC made an adjustment this year, and it is four point five percent. Utility commissioners or council members, we don't have the opportunity to say, hey, we wanna do two percent or three percent. You, it's either do the full four point five percent or you do zero. So it is in conversations with Kathy, our auditors, it is in our, um, best financial interest for that utility to go through that this year. Again, we haven't done it since two thousand and nineteen. And it also helps us in the future if we ever are. And it also helps us in the future if we ever are, um, triggered to go into a full rate case, that could result in a much higher percentage increase, and it would, it kind of helps lessen the shock eventually in the future. I don't know when that is gonna happen, but if we keep with these periodic increases, you know, we might avoid a, a big shock to ratepayers in the future. Uh, so for, I've also outlined kind of what the process is. Um, we do have to send notices which are attached to this memo, uh, to ratepayers, and to the Wapaka County Post, and that is, we're looking to hopefully do that on October twentieth. Um, and then we have forty-five days, um, between that posting and when we submit the application, which we're looking at December sixth, and then we would look at January first for this to go into effect. So we, and I, you can see my recommendation, I, I, the recommendation says to support a simplified rate case for the water utility. I would end it at that, not with an official application date because whatever could throw that off. And if, if you would consider supporting this, I would ask that you leave the date out of the recommendation.
All right, anybody understand what the request is? So we're looking for, uh, a motion to approve submitting an application for a simplified rate case to the water utility, uh, which will amount to a four point five percent increase in the water rates. Motion by Peterson, second by Chestnut, uh, that we approve this motion. Any discussion? Andy will call the roll.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, uh, next up is the license report fifteen ninety-one. You can see that on page, uh,
sixty-eight?
Page sixty-eight of your packet, I guess it is on page sixty-eight. This is, uh, bartender's license, you have a few names on there. Again, looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Martin, that we approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no. Motion carried. Uh, communications and recommendations of the mayor, I just want to remind you of our next meeting, uh, after our, our regular city council meeting on October eighteenth, that night when we finish, we are gonna go into committee of the whole meeting, uh, and I think we're gonna have a preliminary budget.
That's the plan.
For you at that time. Okay? So, and that will be the discussion that night. We will, obviously, it's a committee of the whole meeting, so we're not looking for approval that night, but it's gonna be your first, uh, kick at it, uh, to see what you think. All right? Anybody else have anything for the good of the meeting tonight? Motion by Hagan.
Second.
Second by Peterson, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no.
Always first on the switch on that one.
Motion carried. We're adjourned at, uh, seven fourteen P M. Have a great night, everybody.